I will call the meeting to order. I'll ask the clerk to announce the meeting and call the roll.
A special session is being held on Thursday, May 25th, 2017, at 5:00 PM in the 5th floor conference room for a presentation on the Parks Master Plan. Roll call. Townsend, McKernan.
Here.
Mugia.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Philbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Walker. Holland.
Here. So, big night tonight, our long-awaited Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Been working on it for a long time. Mr. Buck, I'll turn it over to you to move us forward.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. We are pleased to come forward tonight with the first draft round of the official Parks Master Plan. You all recall, this is a process that we started last July, so it's been almost a year in working forward to get to where we are tonight. Anxious to roll this out. The document was submitted to you electronically. It's about over 500 pages, I believe. The report's some 60-some pages, but a lot of attachments, addendums that come through that were delivered on Monday. I'm sure you've all read that in detail, but that was just intended to get it out in front of you so you'd have the chance if you wanted to pop into some sections of it. Tonight, we're going to go through a presentation to kind of summarize all the different areas they dug into and looked through. And this is the only topic we have in the session between now and 7:00, so it gives us plenty of time to hear what they have to say and dig into it as much as you'd like to during this time slot. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to our Parks Director, Jeremy Rogers, and let him take us from there.
Thank you, Doug. Good evening. In 2015, this group approved to fund a Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. We worked with the purchasing department to go out to bid and do the selection process. When it was all said and done, we hired the firm Vireo, formerly known as Patty Banks. And so I will turn it over to Steve and Larry from Vireo and let them walk us through this master plan.
Thanks, Jeremy. I'm Steve Rhodes, Principal at Vireo, and with me is Larry Reynolds, one of our landscape architects. And also Pat O'Toole with Green Play was one of our subconsultants. And we're going to give you sort of an overview of our whole entire process tonight. Our schedule started off last July where we collected demographics and trends data. We reviewed existing planning documents, which we incorporated into the results of this report. We began to begin our stakeholder and focus group outreach. We were, our focus there was to get those, those groups that were active in the Parks and Recreation Department and also local stakeholders. Our citizen survey was developed. That's a statistically valid survey that was sent out. We, we waited a little bit to avoid the election in November and the holiday season to send that out, so that actually didn't go out till January. We did complete our inventory of facilities, the rec program and service analysis, operation and staffing analysis. We got the return of the statistically valid survey around March. We did the community center and marina assessment. We did a visioning workshop with the park board. And we've developed implementation recommendation, and this is the draft of the finalization of the strategic plan. I want to cover a little bit of the park history because it's so important to who you are and where the Parks and Recreation Department came from. It will also sort of paint a picture of really what your citizens have said for a number of years still is true today. Your system was a wonderful system that was created around the turn of the century. Three significant landscape architects helped pull it together over a time of about 30 years. They'd had drawings and elaborate plans, of which they cycled through their different lifespans and have changed today. You had a great infrastructure push to build these facilities for the citizens. There was not only a park board, but there was also a recreation commission later. Those facilities deteriorated. New codes came in. The pools had to be updated. This is Clam Park Pool in the late 30s when the codes changed. Their system was developed with principles and guidelines for the types of activities and programming that were meant to take place in them. It was so the recreation, the parks are actually tied to the recreational programming that would take place into them. There was a lot of partnerships, partnerships with schools, partnerships with neighborhood groups, partnerships with the Institute of Play. There was numerous churches were partners in the early development of the park system. Playgrounds were very significant around 1909. They evolved. One of the programs that was very popular in the early days of the park system was the music program, where the actual park department provided music lessons, instrumental lessons to students in the summer. And then provided a program for them to participate in the band, the band, the summer band. The reason we have this platform at Big 11 Lake is because that was a summer band program. There was opportunities for baptisms in Big 11 Lake. It was actually a part of the historic plans of the lake to provide this opportunity for the citizens and the church groups to do at Big 11 Lake. In 1947, there was the creation, around this time, the creation of a recreation district that provided recreation program, programming. They partnered with the school district and the park board to provide those different services. You'll see on the right, total attendance. Do I have a pointer on this? Oops. No, I don't. Oh. Total attendance in 1947 over all of the programs, active and passive recreation, 757,000 people. That was five times the city's population. You stocked the lakes with fish that provided opportunities for fishing derbies weekly. On a Wednesday morning was the fishing derby. It was advertised in the paper. Again, a partnership here with the Kansas Rod and Gun Club. You still do that to an extent today with fishing at your current lakes. We reviewed the mission statement with the park board and really condensed it into a smaller, more concise mission statement. And we've, we've concluded that it should be something along the lines of, "The mission of the Unified Government Parks and Recreation Department is to provide clean, safe, well-maintained facilities for all." We also reviewed a number of previous plans that helped provide some background data for us. This is a list of them. A lot of them pointed to a lot of the results that we're going to show you today. One of the ones that was most interesting, and this is a slide to sort of turn the page on because we're going to kind of circle the wagons. This is from your 2002 Park Master Plan, and it was a 10-year vision, so it was the 2012 Vision Plan for Parks. A lot of the things that were presented in this plan ring true from what we heard from your community. Our public input session included focus groups, 12 sessions over three days. It included park staff meetings, both maintenance and recreation divisions. It included an online survey, of which we had 154 respondents. We talked to key leaders, stakeholders, and community groups. There's a listing here of those folks that we've talked to already. It included, so the total direct engagement across all of those discussions, we touched about 13, almost 1,400 people, including with our statistically valid survey. Our Facebook reach was about 5,500 people, almost 5,600. And we did mail, survey mailers to reach about 4,000, 4,200 people, for a total reach of about 9,700 folks, touches across the community. We created a Facebook page for the project to push information out to the general public about when our focus groups would be held and opportunities for follow-up discussion. There was 4,100 surveys mailed, 2,100 reminder postcards. There was a $5, $50 gift card offered as incentives to return those surveys. There was a total sampling of 334 returned, 300, oops, 368 filled out in Open Link and returned the survey for a total of 602 respondents. The survey data, we did sort of aggregate it so it matches your demographics. This is the methodology that the survey firm used. The respondent's profile, generally, both the invitation samples in the green and the Open Link is in the brown. More than two-thirds of the people responding were female. There was a lot of, the majority of the household status were couples with children at home responding to the survey. We had the ethnic profile, the race and demographic also broken down as a survey question so they could tell us on their survey response. Respondent's profile by district. This is the returns that we received by district. Sure. Okay. The values envisioned that most people wanted to see from the park department, both in the, both in the mail-out survey and the Open Link, were safety and security, investing in programming, protecting the environment, promoting active lifestyles, and beautification. And at that point, there's sort of a line that's sort of drawn. Other, the other things are important, too. Go back. Rating of Parks and Recreation Services currently. The availability of parks within the community, they thought was, was average. Park maintenance and upkeep was average. Park system as a whole was generally average. There's no, there's no, there's not a lot of green on here. But we go to the bottom. Marketing and awareness of recreational programs is really low. Programs offered within parks is really low. Access to parks and amenities, this is connectivity, this is trails, this is sidewalks, is fairly low. And then the condition of some of the amenities is fairly low. Importance of existing facilities to the community, the blue areas are very important. Community parks are very important. Open space and natural areas, landscape beautification. Trails and levee trails is very important. Playgrounds. Picnic shelters and programming and events are sort of a dividing line there of what's important to folks. So what we're seeing from this are sort of basic infrastructure type of things that's important to the community. The degree of which existing facilities meets the needs of the community. We go to the bottom, and the things that aren't meeting the need, outdoor pools, on-street bikeways, dog parks, trails. Those are the key highlights of those. The things at the top, the picnic shelters, community parks, open space and natural areas, their need is completely or somewhat met. This one is a chart of high importance versus low needs met. And you'll see in the, the upper-left chart, the things that are of high importance to people but are currently have a low needs being met. Over on the right, over on the right is the things that are of high importance and currently they feel that the high needs are being met. And then conversely, on the bottom, low importance and low needs met. And then low, low importance and high needs met. Improvements to the existing facilities that people would like to see overwhelmingly. The first priority improvement would be restrooms, renovations, walking trails, lighting, sidewalks, play equipment. Newer, more modern, more diverse types of play equipment. Picnic shelters, pool improvements, trails, community gardens, and community centers. And then it sort of takes another dip. Importance of future facilities. This one, I'll take the top five. The picnic shelters, indoor facilities that provide weights, cardio, and pool. These are often found in what we think of as a modern-type community center or rec center. A park on the western side of the county. A new outdoor pool. And after there, it sort of drops off. Well, we started the meeting. We started the meeting and you wanted four, and it says A. Where was I? Okay. Priority of future facilities, outdoor pool, those indoor facilities, oh, I recovered that. Programs and activities. So this gives us sort of an insight of what the community is looking to see in terms of programming and activities. Outdoor recreation programs such as fishing, boating, hiking. Community events such as concerts, festivals, triathlons. Fitness classes such as yoga, martial arts, spin, et cetera. Family programs, hobby and interests, wellness programs, senior programs. And then it sort of, it sort of takes another dip after swimming and nature programs. We asked the question about funding mechanisms, what would be supported? And on a five-point scale, the average weighting is here on your right. We feel that there's strong support for the user fees of a center for weights and cardio, perhaps a pool. Bond referendum would be supported for parks-type activities and facilities, or a sales tax dedicated specifically to parks and recreation. I'm now going to, I'm now going to turn it over to Larry, and he's going to cover the, the parks analysis.
We went out to, and visited all of the parks. This is showing service areas of parks, neighborhood parks, community parks, and regional parks. So the lighter green areas are the, the neighborhood parks with a quarter-mile radius, service radius. The community parks are the outer bands at a three-mile radius. And then regional parks out at a five-mile. So there's some opportunities, some gaps in there, opportunities for, to fill with recreational and parks. We inventoried over 500 amenities throughout, 54 parks, ranging in size from a tenth of an acre to 1,500 acres. Many to regional-sized parks. Many parks are typically parks that are less than an acre. They have a service radius of about a quarter-mile. You have seven of those. Neighborhood parks, these are parks that are 1 to 25 acres. They serve two to four neighborhoods, have a service area, walking distance of quarter to a half-mile. You have 37 of those. Community parks, there's four. These are parks that range in size from 25 to 75 acres and serve multiple neighborhoods. And then you have regional parks, there's three, the Wyandotte County Lake, Wyandotte County Park, and Pearson Park. These are the larger parks with a five-mile service radius or greater. And then these are some, some pictures, examples of the conditions of parks that we saw as we went throughout the community. In the draft plan, we've provided a cut sheet for each park that includes an inventory of amenities. We noted neighborhood groups and partners that were associated with each park and provided suggestions that we heard from them on each as well. We did a performance rating for each and assessed the condition of the amenities in each park. Some of the recommendations we came up with were, one, to remove many's that have served their useful life. And there's a number of those, the old merry-go-rounds and slides, slides and swings, metal slides. Make improvements to each park over the next five years. On an annual basis, try to touch nine neighborhood parks, one community park, and one regional park. Approach reinvestments with partners and neighborhood groups and target improvements which enhance accessibility, character connectivity, and usability. Restore and celebrate the history of parks and historic park elements, and reduce mowing regime in areas that are not used by the public. Some of the comments we heard throughout the process were, bring people back to UG parks. Focus on facilities and partnerships, and support maintenance and staffing needs.
We, we heard at a, a maintenance discussion with some of the staff that, you know, they're running from trying to put out fire to fire. And if they see something that's broken in a park, they can't fix it right then and there because they're running to the next fire. So that is something that, that we need to get addressed.
We visited the community and rec centers. What we heard from the public was they'd like to see upgrades and improvements. And we noticed that as we were there as well. They really need an in-depth study of the recreation centers and aquatic facilities as well to identify specific programming needs and different types of, and levels of aquatic facilities.
I think we also need to probably look at the current community centers. Are, are they really community centers anymore, or are they more neighborhood centers? They don't fit the bill of a current sort of picture of a recreation center like you would see in another community. They sort of fit the bill of a neighborhood center that you would see in another community.
Improvements to ADA access. Inside and out as well. Fitness equipment. These are some examples of, we've seen in the area of modern improvements and amenities in other facilities. Some of the common features that we found in Wyandotte County rec centers, gymnasiums, some have a stage. Materials that we've, are generally just tired overall and are in need of some updating.
We also looked at the marina and facility, and it's more, more of a look at how can we sort of expand the, the services at the current marina. Staff has done it sort of an overhaul and have done a wonderful job with the limited resources that they've had. But we, you know, we looked at, it needs to be modernized. You know, phone service is inconsistent down there. There's no air conditioning. You know, the interior finishes have been updated, but they're sort of in need of an overhaul. Snack bar and grill renovations have been made, but you know, is that what a concessionaire is going to want? And then your current manager's been there. He's starting his 44th year. And there's a, there's a whole lot of, a whole lot of, of the lake right there in that gentleman. And you need to capture that and, and push it forward into the future. The docks have been overhauled. There, there are some boats that sort of slide out behind the current dock location. There's gasoline available, parking available, but we desperately need boat patrol in this area more frequently. Observation and staffing. Observation and staffing, you know, it's anticipated that, you know, you're gonna need a marina manager, a marina supervisor, and three maybe seasonal or part-time staff. When that gentleman does decide to finally retire, you know, that could be an anticipated cost of 150,000 annually. We think you need to conduct a marina feasibility study to look at, how can we bring sort of, expand the services from what they are currently into sort of new demographic territories, bring in sort of a younger crowd, have more rental opportunities out there for the younger crowd, Wi-Fi service at the marina, it's spotty right now, you can't actually get a signal inside the building, it was very well-built. Invest in the needed renovations, the, the technology, the MEP upgrades, the finishes, HVAC, like I said, the docks have recently been upgraded, but perhaps maybe there's more of a opportunity to set a different pricing structure based upon some, some newer, maybe larger docks, maybe they're covered. Safety and security, again, would be important.
Let me do it. We took a look at the Parks Department's budget and comparison to the UG's budget overall, this shows a percent change over the last 12 years. Go back. Yeah. There was a dip in 2009, and... You know, times were tough for, for the community as a whole, and it's not unlikely for parks to kind of take a backseat to focus on safety, security, and other things, so over time, lately it's trended more up in the last few years.
What are the dotted lines, what do they represent?
So that, those are trend lines. So you can see the cyan color one is the UG's budget and, and purple one is parks. They're slightly diverging. This shows parks' percent of the UG's total operating budget, and this includes administration, maintenance, and recreation. It does not include park rangers, capital outlay, it's just focused on, on administration, maintenance, and recreation. Oops, go back. So overall, over the last 12 years, it has trended, trended down, and it's currently at about 1.87%. We did some comparisons to the NRPA Annual Report, and by comparison, Wyandotte County is about 40% less. We have a, so we set some goals, a five-year and a 10-year goal. A five-year goal to get to the, about 4% of the UG total budget, and that's getting back just above where it was in 2008, 2009 before the dip. And those, sorry. So the comparisons that we drew from the NRPA were based on a number of things, from budget by population, acres maintained, the number of parks maintained, and the population per square mile. Capital outlay, this is parks over the last 12 years, it's kind of been up and down, and the goal would be to determine a percent that can be delivered consistently and then increase it annually. Staffing took a dip like the budget as well in 2009, 2010, and, and hasn't fully come back up. So we're about half to what that was, and this is total head count, and this is seasonal and part-time as well. Staffing comparisons are about 33% of, of relevant comparisons to the NRPA's report.
Can I ask you?
Yes.
You made several references in this to excluding Sunflower Hills Golf Course, and why, why did you exclude?
We wanted to focus just on the admin, maintenance, and recreation, and the golf course is a separate division and fund itself and positions associated with it.
Yes, but it is publicly-owned recreational facility that kind of fits into this general topic. I realize on user fees, but seems like it should be in the mix somewhere for analysis.
It's, I'm gonna just throw it in, it's an enterprise fund if I recall.
Right.
So that's typically why it's not included, because it generates its own revenue, including CIP usually.
Yeah? We had, from the 2014 year-end report, total revenue was about 100,000, adult sports participants was 778, youth sports was about 1,400, swim lessons, there was 50 participants and over 5,000 visitations to community centers. And on the right shows a number of notable special events. Pat, do you want to talk about some of the comparisons?
We looked at just a couple of plans that were just recently completed over in Lawrence, Kansas, and Blue Springs, just to give some of the, the numbers that they're operating on. So if you look at, at staff, I mean, Lawrence about, a little more than half the population, Blue Springs about a third of the population, operating with 11 people, these are just full-time staff. So Blue Springs has infiltrated an awful lot of part-time and seasonal, but they've also really done a very good job of partnering with like youth organizations for sports so that they don't have to be the programmers, they're basically the, the facilitators and the brokers for that. Looking at the budgets, again, Blue Springs very, a third of that, and this again is just no CIP in it, no golf courses, those types of things, it's pretty much trying to compare apples to apples, which is really not possible, but doing the best that we can here. So they are very, what we looked at as we, as we did their park and rec master plan, a very poor system. Their entire operating budget, $3 million. Yet on the other hand, the number of programs that they're operating, you know, 780. So if you were to triple those based on population, they would be up around Lawrence compared to about 80 programs, and that's estimated because we couldn't really find exactly how many annually for Wyandotte County. So looking at the, the 78 folks, you saw that with a, with a NRPA comparison, and that's an average of, of NRPA across the country. Parks and Rec budget here, 5.5, looks like from a pricing strategy perspective, looking at pricing, that Wyandotte County's pricing to the lowest common denominator, to keep it affordable for those in your lower income.
Pat.
Is that an error where participants is given a dollar figure?
Um...
It says number of programs, 780, participants, $35,000.
That's programs and number of participants for $35,000.
Number of programs, yeah, number of programs on the top line. Yes, that is. Participants should not have a dollar sign on either one of those columns.
Thank you. Okay, I was confused by that, thank you.
And again, and we don't really have a good handle on participants here. I did see the one in 2014 where we had 5,000 coming into, to rec centers, so the most I've seen is somewhere in the neighborhood of 8,000 to 10,000. So again, you can see the 35,000 that Blue Springs pulling in, at a third of the population. They have, they just built their first indoor center a year ago versus having the number of centers you have. Lawrence has four, just built a fieldhouse two years ago, and, I mean, if you look at the programs Lawrence is doing with the staff, they have, you know, 3,670 programs a year, and a lot of those are brokered, but they're people that are, are handling contracts instead of instructors, so to speak. And then you look at the program revenue, this is probably the biggest thing that, that you see the difference. The, the closest we could come to the numbers is, and then this is for what we call direct cost of program, so if you didn't have that program, those costs would go away. 10 to 19% cost recovery, Lawrence is at 98%, everybody knows Johnson County is at about 130% and have no tax support. But Blue Springs, again, is at 45%. Nationally, we see about 50 to 75% is, is the range we see, depending on, again, the ability to charge market rates, and you'll see the other, in my opinion, big common denominator of these focuses, they, they have a scholarship program. They both have front and center guarantees, we will not turn anybody away, and they will actually put money from a fund through, through their foundation into the program budget, so it does fund that way. It happens to be in most communities, I mean, we do these studies nationally, it's kind of the list, if you're a small, medium, or large-sized business that you don't want to be left off of, is that we support the scholarship fund so kids can participate in these programs. And you start with $100, 250, 500, and you just, it, it, it really builds. So that, YMCA's are close to 40% scholarship-funded across the country to allow people, and they still have some pretty high market rates if you really look at their membership rates. So I think what I looked at was how, sustainability. So the things that I gathered from this is, is if you look at all the stats, and I know it's hundreds of pages, but what I gleaned out of it, you're trying to do the same thing you did in 2008 with half the money and half the staff, and that's gonna run out quickly, and pretty soon you're not gonna be able to repair those buildings. So at some point in time, you gotta decide, which direction are we going, are we gonna try to fix them up? We're gonna try to reassess through these feasibility studies that were, that were really recommending, do you need seven centers, or can you maybe build a nicer, bigger one? See if a neighborhood group wants to keep the building for something or another. Demolish the ones that you can't, but somehow resurrect what you can take care of based on how much money you're gonna give to the park system through your general fund, create a scholarship fund, and then I think the bottom line is we're, we're suggesting you gotta get your facilities up to where people want to come to them before you can count on people coming in for programs, or you're gonna lose them. So maybe it's a two-step, kind of get your, get your facilities and assets before you lose them, then you can start programming the way you want to, and, and I think all of these resurrected park systems are not trying to program everything themselves, they're, they're partnering, they're brokering, they're using every, you know, you walk into a church building and one of the lights off, I'll rent it, and, and putting stuff in there, let somebody else rent it from you in your, in those centers. So that's what we put together here was just, we didn't have a real benchmark task in here, but to just give you an idea, these people aren't that far away, but it's kind of like one is doing really well with cost recovery, the other is, as poor as you are, and their facilities look probably worse than yours because they don't have any indoor, their outdoor, their trails are unsafe. So, and then they also passed a bond referendum at the end of our study, just a month ago. So there is a possibility, and I'll just say that their percentage on the survey was less than yours, so anything's possible.
In the document, on the page that talks about the year-end report, it says total revenue, 104,271, but on this slide, it says program revenue, 511,000, so I'm a little confused.
That was 2014's, which at one point in time was the most recent we had. This, we took off of the actual budget sheets, there's probably, I believe there's $100,000 of contributions in there.
Oh, in there?
In, in this number.
I think the, I, I think the number, the bottom line is probably wrong, because it shows program revenue and expenses identical for Blue Springs and Wyandotte County.
Yeah.
Yes.
So there's some miss on there that we'll have to get a corrected number for.
Yes.
Yeah.
Wherever my scratch sheet is.
Yeah.
Okay, what I do know is the percentages are correct.
Okay.
Do you want to cover this? So in, some of the programs numbers, participation numbers we had from 2007 were for youth sports, 5,000, adult sport programs, 8, 8,700. For non-sports, recreation classes, activities in youth, for youth and adults was about 30% more than, than adult and youth sports programs combined. Special events in 2007 were, had 40, over 40,000 participants, non-league sports, almost 31,000, and community center visitations were almost 80,000. 2014, it was just over 5,000.
So if you looked at this sheet and you were in business, what would you do?
I'd, I'd start by questioning the numbers.
Well, and again, all we can look at and analyze the numbers that were given, I've got a theory that in 2007 you had enough people to probably accurately count some of this, and in 14 and 16 you probably didn't. What we do know is you, you don't have a tracking system until just very recently, whereas other departments, we can say, here's, show us your participation and your revenues, and it all pumps out. What we've been doing is looking at different stuff and trying to do the best we can to analyze it, but this, this is what we've received. Obviously, it's not accurate, because there's, some of them are empty, that we know you had some people in it. But when I see 5,000 plus on an even number, that was guesstimated by somebody, and I see 79,766, that was counted by somebody.
Another area that we noticed is on the website, we heard quite a lot from the focus group meetings, it's hard to sign up for a class, it's hard to sign up for a class. So, you know, this is the current website, if you wanted to sign up for adult, adult sports, then youth sports, there's this site, and you can print out this form, and you can mail it or take it to the Parks Department to register for the program. This day and age, if you don't, can't do this on the fly, register your kid when you're thinking about it, you're not in the program. So really providing the, the department with the tools and the people and the resources to be able to push the, the programs that they do have out and manage them themselves, and not have to go through a clearinghouse to post something or to, to pull, to, to see if they have enough people to get a class. Recommendations on this in our, in the recreation is focus on facility modernization, extend partnerships with service providers for rec programs in the interim, those would be the Y, Turner Rec, other, other partners. Price to a marketable rate, which covers base level costs to put the program on, just at least cover your costs. Provide scholarships for those in need. The school districts do a really good job of tracking that through their free and reduced lunch program. Improve marketing and awareness of programs, again, allowing the, the department to push the message out for programs at the, at the appropriate time on their own. And then the community programming priorities, things like we saw from the survey, the outdoor programmings, the events, fitness classes, family programs, and the hobby and interest programs are sort of, sort of your target area. Again, back to some of my opening statements that, you know, this is a proud department that has been around for a long time doing these very types of activities.
Could I ask you, on, on the concerts, you know, we have a concert venue, and there are concerts at that concert venue, is this talking about something other than that?
I could only guesstimate that what people would refer to on concerts and festivals is more concerts nearer to them, so if you go back to the history of the system, and some of the neighborhood parks had smaller bandstands, more smaller type outdoor events in those parks to get activity back in them. And then we're gonna, I'm gonna quickly hit these very briefly. The communications and marketing, you know, the website, the updates, the online access to program offerings, and the social updates, the online access to program offerings, and the social media, that is something that we heard sort of loud and clear. You know, it should be the place where people go to sign up to get information. You should push it out to your residents. Encourage collaboration with management and an hourly staff. Allow decision-making authority at lower-level positions. And the upper and middle-level management need to be seen in the neighborhood groups and associations. And create a sense of upward mobility within that department. Reinvest. We've took, we've took sort of a stab at a five-year plan for you, based upon the condition of the parks, starting with the ones that are in most need, which are here at the bottom. We provided a list, almost, I think, a month ago, for some capital dollars to address these parks with restroom, picnic shelters, playgrounds, et cetera. Community programming, again, this ties to your history. Here's a list and a ranking of those programs. It's what we heard from their focus groups and from the survey, pretty loud and clear. And you need to market them to your community a little bit better. We do know, for things like swimming lessons, people are leaving the county to go to other places for swimming lessons. Because that facility, the facility and that program is not here, it's not modernized for your residents. Partnerships, again, to the history of your department and your system, they're very important. We know that there are currently a lot of partners out there working in your parks. We heard from them. We heard from them, even when we talked to them two or three times, they kept calling and saying, you guys need to come back to us, you guys need to come back. Well, we're going to take these recommendations back to the community and give them another opportunity to have some input and comment on this, on what we're presenting to you tonight. But there are partners out there. You don't have to do it all yourself. And those partners exist.
Commissioner Johnson, go first, please.
Thank you, Commissioner and Mayor. Good evening. I want to go to the reinvest slide. It's back toward the end. I'm glad to see that basic needs, that message seemed to come through restrooms. But as I look at this graph, is the suggestion, based on where this is, that you would wait until year five to make changes or improvements to restrooms? Or am I not, I'm reading that incorrectly?
So the list, the list of restrooms, picnic playgrounds, we identified the ones that were the worst of the worst. And so we put those up front, and those were the key ones that need to be hit first. Same with the shelters and playgrounds.
Okay. So just because of where it is, it doesn't mean that you're suggesting the restrooms in year five are hit?
Correct.
Okay. So are you making?
Those are the first things, those are the first things that should be addressed.
Commissioner, I think there's, if I, if I understand your question, I think the list on the left is not attached to a year on the right.
It is not, correct.
Okay. Two different graphs on the same slide.
All right.
Thank you.
These recommendations have already? These recommendations have already been put in.
Point to that again? They've already been put in.
These have already been given to the department to ask for in the budget discussions.
Right. Well, let me ask it another way. Say Fairfax restroom. Where are we saying, I should look to the right to see what year you're recommending that be?
Year one.
Address in year one. Okay. All right. Got it from here. Thank you.
Can we ask specific questions about, can we ask specific questions about individual parks? Okay. So I just happen to know that you've had a partnership with a local not-for-profit that has invested a lot in Vega and Emerson and Ruby Park. So I see Vega and Emerson are at the top, so they need the least amount of improvement. What keeps Ruby in year four still? Why wouldn't that be at the top of the list? What's wrong with it?
It is in year four because these are in, the one through three are in more need. So by the time year four hits, it will probably need some attention at some level.
Do you know, on those parks, whether it be Ruby or any other one, do you know what, why you say that?
We can look. That's part of the.
Oh, please don't make me go through that. I'm just curious, as an example.
As an example, yeah.
Sure. So overall, condition of amenities in Ruby?
Should be fantastic, in my opinion. I'm just saying.
Well, that's why it's at the top. That's why it's at the top.
Because they're saying, we're not going to do anything to it for.
I understand that, but I think it should be even higher than that.
Well, we can ignore it for as long as you want.
I just am saying, I think it should be higher. That's why I was asking, what drew it down at the bottom of the list. I just happen to, I work with Jack a lot on, Mr. Webb on the parks in that particular area. And I know for a fact, he and I, through collaboration and partnership, had invested a lot of private money into that park very recently. So I'm just asking why it would be in four. I think it should be higher. And if it helps move other people to the top of the list, which in this case is the bottom of the list, I'm just curious if you could tell me what keeps it at four, do you know?
Well, it would be, like, condition of amenities was really kind of the thing that guides a lot of this. But also, we also looked at accessibility factors throughout the parks. And this one on our cut sheet, we've shown that Ruby is really the condition of amenities. Repair or place damaged picnic benches and grills, improve pavement at the intersection south of Thirty First and Ruby, new play equipment, and picnic shelters.
Okay. So as an example of something like that, that is, just to give an example, I think those kinds of amenities that are lower-cost items that will make a big difference in the utilization of the park should be something that our commission really focuses on partnership with local neighborhood associations. Because those are, though expensive, not near as expensive as like playground equipment, or major infrastructure improvement, like restrooms, things like that. Those are affordable things that our community can participate in and take some sort of ownership in. So it's just an example. I'm glad they're at the top of the list. I just, I just know I've seen a number of parks that I feel like should have a higher priority. Far be it for me to fight against, you know, stuff in my district, but I just know that I'm very happy with that. And if I know specifically what the needs are in those parks, I know that there are community groups there that will help with that. And that should free up money for other parks, or, for example, areas of our county that have no parks.
Correct.
Yeah.
Another thing we looked at in our analysis of the parks, was we sort of looked at them through a filter of, sort of crime prevention through environmental design, making sure that sightlines were clear, making sure that there was, you know, if there was something, a structure in it, you could see feet or head. And so that went into some of the scoring and analysis. So perhaps some of these areas had some overgrown understory from the edges where you had to walk by that to get into the park. That went into sort of our assessment as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you pull up the Park Service areas again, please? And while you're pulling that up, Jack and his crew have always done a good job, and we appreciate your work, Jack.
Get that.
Okay, for year number twelve. And Melissa and I and Doug just met here recently about some property we own down in the floodplain. And, you know, we have no parks. There's no way, even if you live by one at Kan Lake, that you could walk to it, because there aren't very many houses, no sidewalks, no nothing. But I think that we need to put the area that we talked about as a high priority, considering we don't have anything. You know, and I think that's a great location to put it. It's down off of Five Highland Walkout. It's a floodplain. It's where the little go-karts used to run. I think we need to heighten the awareness, put this on a top priority, because it would be great where we didn't have to fix anything for four years. But you have to have something fixed.
Commissioner Markley.
So I recently got a message to my Facebook page congratulating us on getting some new playground equipment throughout the county. So already, your efforts are being noticed, and that people are noticing that you're replacing things that are broken, and they're appreciating that. So this same individual who messaged me said, when are we going to get a park out west? So I told her, she should go watch us on TV tonight. So I don't know if she's watching, but we're having that discussion here. So I appreciate your efforts already to kind of update our parks. This doesn't address a lot of the tiny pocket parks, and I know you and I have had some discussions about those in the past. So particularly, just these little tiny parks in the neighborhood where there was a chunk of land and there was no house on it, and they said, we'll just make it a park. In Highland Crest, we have a ton of them. I'm sure they were a good idea, but we, as a government, and this is not even necessarily on you, we have to decide what we're going to do about those. Are we going to leave them as parks when they actually are not parks? They're just empty lots? Or are we going to try to do something else with those properties? Seeing the volume of what needs to be done to these larger parks, you can probably guess what my opinion is on what to do with those vacant pieces of property. But if we have neighborhood groups that want to maintain them, or we need to form those kind of partnerships, I'm fine with that as well. I'm glad to see Matinee Park on the list to the left on the page that has the five-year graph. I would say that is a high priority park for me. Tends to have more damage than some of the other parks in my district. It is adjacent to an elementary school, so it also gets a ton of use. That shelter is used constantly. So I appreciate, would appreciate attention there. Online enrollment is huge. People, if they want to participate in programs, they have to be able to enroll online. They're not going to print off a paper and mail it in. And by the time they do, remember to print off a paper and mail it in, they're going to have forgotten they wanted to enroll in something. So that's a high priority. If we're going to start doing programming, we've got to be set up in a way that that can happen easily for families. And the last thing I would say, and this is sort of a brag on my part, but also, it's just a good example, this can't happen. We can't have active community centers, and we can't have active programming. Turner Rec, two decades ago, well, even less than that, really, was an office in an empty gym. And it was a whole building, but that's all they used, was the office and the empty gym. That's how most of our community centers are today.
That's right.
It's an operating office with one person in it and an empty gym. And anybody who's been to buy Turner Rec recently knows that place is packed all the time. They have all different types of programming for adults, children, seniors. They're affiliated with that community garden, and they're just always hopping, and they have great community events. So it is possible, and there's definitely a demand for it. And, yeah, I think this looks really huge, and it sounds really intimidating, but I would say that's an example of the demand that's in our community, and how doable it is for us to start that ball rolling.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum?
Thank you. I want to reiterate support for Commissioner Kane's request, kind of speaking to the commission, for a park for Piper. And a location is identified that we own, and I just am asking for consideration as we move through budget time, that that be given serious consideration. I know that we talked about it, and there might be a bump or two in the road. But I just want to support that. On your slide, talking about the regional parks, I find it curious that you say those have a five-mile radius service area.
They go beyond that, but just at five miles, it covers a good portion of the community.
And I don't know, you know, Wyandotte County, Lake Oar, Wyandotte County Park, for example, I would say those parks are drawing from not just the entire county, but the metro area as well.
Those are, those are the two most popular parks in your entire system. And those are your two most easiest opportunities to introduce new uses to, to capture new visits to your system.
Yep. I want to ask, on your recommendations, thought I had marked the page, where you talk about the restrooms and the, at the very end, sorry, restrooms, picnic shelters, playgrounds, on your recommendations. Do you have a notion of how much $750,000 buys by way of picnic shelters? I don't.
We had, we had totaled up those six and gave them that number, so it was a little over a hundred thousand dollars apiece. That is nothing, that is not a WPA error shelter. That's an off-the-shelf shelter that your staff could select and purchase and install. And also the restrooms, those restroom numbers associated there are off-the-shelf restrooms. And there's numbers included in there for new utilities around the immediate area, and enough rock for a footing. But those aren't custom designed, like you have in a lot of your parks.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. I was looking at, first of all, I'm glad to see that I have a few parks that are in the first year or two of recommendations. So that's, that's, I'm glad to see that part there. I'm curious about the recommendation about market rate, and I've just lost my page here. How has, have you all, what has been your experience in working with, and then there was another one, the other one that says lowest common denominator, moving into a more market-rate scholarship environment in an urban community? What's been you all's experience with regard to that? My district is in one of the more urban areas, and the notion of charging a fee is not often met very well. And so what has been you all's experience in converting, you know, converting into a situation like that, where you move into a market rate? And also, talk a little bit about the scholarship piece as well, if you could.
Okay. We, we've done this all over the country, and this is probably the most popular thing to turn systems around. We've done it in urban, we've done it in urban mixtures. And there's several ways to do it. When we talk market rate, the first place to go is, what are your expenses? If you're a business and you don't know what it costs, how do you know what to charge? So your market rate would be, how many kids do I need in a program to break even? And that, that would probably be designed by your population, your age rates there, that are drawn to that, to that center. But also, how big is the area? If you've got a gymnasium, if you're doing basketball, you know there's, you know, ten on a court, a couple of kids on the bench, so you can do the math. There's also situations where if you have some areas that are not as blight, what collectively, so youth basketball could be your ring of market rates? What we have found, even in the urban sectors, is by placing a cost on it, we've placed a value on it. And what you want to do is position that program, so when that cost goes in, so the quality goes up. So the quality of the facility, which is kind of what we're showing here as, as a strategy, quality of equipment, I might also say, in Green Play, we're ex-park and recreation professionals, directors and assistant directors. So my last stint was in Annapolis, Indiana, where we had not just the urban issue, but we had the suburban donut that was willing to pay anything and had no facilities. And then we were concentrated too much down in the urban area. So we had to fix both at the same time. And what we did was find out that involving those partnerships, those nets stayed up even outside. Things were not torn up like they used to be. The graffiti went down. So that pride, and when we then came back five years later and surveyed the neighborhood, the number one reason why that happened was involvement. the number one reason why that happened was involvement and value. And we placed a value on that. And we had a sweat equity ability in there as part of the scholarship program. $5 an hour, come do something that we save money on the, on the maintenance end. Pick, you know, pull weeds so we don't have to weed eat, empty trash so we don't have a custodian to do it. Save us money on that end, we'll give you, we call it a playdough, that's good for anything but concessions. That's one that I'm not even including in this. The scholarship program is, if you've got a foundation yourselves, or you have a foundation you can run it through, is to just create, just a scholarship program for youth recreation programs. And you start it small, you again build it in increments. A lot of times they'll call it gold, you know, bronze, silver, and you just got to start it. Once you start it, it usually runs, it's a snowball running downhill. You can have, Lawrence has a golf tournament every year that all the proceeds go to that foundation. They have in their mission statement, "We won't turn away anybody that doesn't have the ability to play, to pay." So, play and pay. They use the school lunch system, so it's really easy. You don't embarrass folks or anything. So, it has worked, it's worked in a blended situation, it's worked in a, you know, sometimes you just wanted to find that area that this is an area where we're going to take the market rate and we're going to cut it in half. So, the whole idea is, on all this stuff, and I would also, some of the stuff that I've heard here, if you build a new park, don't just count on, just don't do the capital cost because you're going to spend more than 10 years keeping that up than what it costs to build it. And that's what's happening here is, is, you know, nothing changed here with what you owned, and this has happened with your resources. So, now you add this and you don't do anything here, you're putting an awful lot of strain on these folks, on your budget, on your supplies. Went through it again with Lawrence. They opened a brand-new trail that was nine miles long, and the maintenance wasn't even thought of. And it didn't take long to do math on how wide is a mower, how many stripes of nine miles, 38 weeks, 38 hours a week, which is a dedicated mower, trailer, truck, and person. Where's it coming from? What do you not want us to do as you snip that tape? The next week, they had a new mower, and the community recognized that. And guess what? All of a sudden, the scholarship fund bumped that same month. And they wanted to start a new maintenance fund. So, it is that value you create, and there's a lot of examples nationally of free stuff that people won't get off the highway to go to see Abraham Lincoln's birth spot. When they had no money in dire straits to fix it up, they threw five bucks a car in there, five times the traffic went in there. That's just what happens. So, again, and the other thing that I would say is polish your jewel. You've got Wyandotte County out there that's not in bad shape. What you can do there is start saying, "This is our new standard. Now, year one, we're going to go into these parks and do restrooms. And in year two, we're doing here." But finish something that you can point to and say, "That is the new Wyandotte County park standard."
The reinvestment, thank you for that answer. That was great. The reinvestment, is that just for parks or is that for parks and recreation centers that I see on this last page, fourth from the bin? Is that just for the parks or does that include the recreation centers?
That's both.
Okay.
Again, we recommended that you look at those and what can you do with them? How can you modernize them? Would they become more neighborhood-type centers or remain rec centers? And if they are rec centers, then you need to consider, you know, those current community centers, if you turn them into rec centers, they need, they need the things that the people are looking for and willing to pay for.
Wooden floors, set of vinyl, if they're playing basketball, that kind of thing. So, community centers kind of a, the finishes don't, they're not great for anybody, but they're okay for everybody. Rec centers move into that little higher ring of people willing to pay to come in and work out. Basketball's going to be on a nice court, and that's kind of the differential of that value I'm talking about.
Yeah, I hadn't even thought about that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Philbrook.
Well, first off, I want to thank you for the wonderful work you did at Eisenhower. All the, all the, I guess what, you guys cut a ribbon here not too long ago with some new playground equipment, and I'm sorry I couldn't make that. But I understand it was pretty doggone nice, and I was, I was happy to see that, see that happen. And I'm also want to say that that particular neighborhood stays very involved with what happens at Eisenhower. If anything, if anybody messes anything up, they are to you guys or to me to have it taken care of. And I, and so I really love the involvement of the neighborhood groups, and you guys have a lot to look after over there. The other, the other thing is, is that I'm just, you're right, it does seem very overwhelming, you know, when you look at the, this big gigantic picture. And for me, one of my first responses is, how many of these little pieces of property can we get the heck rid of? Because I don't want to have to go down there and mow it personally, and I sure don't want to have to pay our guys to mow those little pockets things. I think if the neighborhoods, you know, a particular neighborhood wants to adopt it and somebody wants to put it in their name and they want to keep it that way, I'm all for that. But I think we need to find ways to get rid of those itty-bitty pocket ones unless somebody else wants to take care of them. I really do appreciate your working and talking with groups that are already invested in our, in our community parks because I was fortunate enough to go to a couple of your meetings, and these people are like Energizer bunnies. I mean, they say, "Give us the park, tell us what you want to do, we'll do it, just get out of the way," you know? And that saves us a lot of money if we can let people work on those, well, like at Wyandotte County Park, the people that use the trails to ride their bikes, and we use the horses on, all that kind of stuff. Those guys say they will take care of those trails for us. Why don't we let them do that? You know, why, you know, so if we have to supply a few, a little helping hand and they're more than willing to do it, I don't have any problem with them doing it. You know, and these kind of partners are what's going to save this, what is going to save this community and what has saved this community. So, thank you, and I really do want you to go back out and talk with these folks again. And if there's some way that, that we can bring them in, just as we have had people come in and help us with animal services. You know, we have a volunteer group right now working their little tails off, saving us money already, working with animal services. So, I don't see why we shouldn't do it with this, too.
Markley.
I think you and I have also had the discussion about park sponsorship, and I still think that can be a funding mechanism for some of our parks. Either they sponsor the park or they sponsor the playground, you know, such-and-such business at so-and-so, you know, such-and-such business park or such-and-such business playground at name of park, and let them, let them pay for the maintenance. So, I'd still like to see us look into that and have a process for how that can happen so that businesses can apply.
They can apply online.
That would be lovely.
I'd like to point out the funding mechanism support rating, where you showed the community's support for different funding mechanisms. I think this is very instructive. Oops. In terms of what people are willing to, what people think needs to happen or what people would support in terms of funding. One of the things that I think this presentation shows us what we already know, we need a complete paradigm shift in our parks and recreation. The cuts after 2009 were devastating to our entire system, gutted our recreation programs, gutted our staffing, frankly gutted the morale. I give our Parks Department folks who are there huge credit for sticking it out through the last very lean years. But if we're going to have quality parks, which are quality of life, they're not just fun and games, it's about healthy lifestyle, there's so much that we need to do, and we need to understand parks and rec are an economic engine. People want to live around parks and trails. It increases property values. There's a lot we can do. I can tell you, too, you can spend a million dollars on asphalt in a street and it'll look the same. You can spend a million dollars in a park and it'll transform neighborhoods. So, if you think about bang for the buck in terms of quality of life, we can put a lot of money into our parks and make a real difference strategically in terms of improving the quality of life. Because I'll tell you what, if people had a beautiful park to look at while they were driving by, they might ignore a pothole. But if we have a crummy park and the crummy road, we're going to hear about it. And I think we need to really think about the investment. I want to point out, this is why I think we're on the right track with the YMCA, user fees for fitness facilities, overwhelming support in the community for user fees for fitness facilities. I think people pay for what they value, they value what they pay for. I remember we signed up our son for a Parks and Rec T-ball league years ago, and it was like $10 to sign up. We could have paid $50. Most of the people playing could have paid $50. They just weren't asked to. And there's this mythology out there that it's got to be free. Everything has to be free to make sure everyone can participate. No, everything has to be sustainable so we have something for people to participate in. Because once we ran out of money in '09 and gutted all of our programs, we completely got rid of them. And because we had no market sustainability in our programs, they all went away. So, we, if we're going to provide quality programs, we need to charge people what they're worth. People will pay for it, and we have to scholarship. That model of market rate and scholarship is exactly right. That's why the YMCA people should pay for something. People don't respect things that are free. They don't respect them. They don't treat them well, they don't have any ownership in them, and people just walking into a free something, even the Parkwood Pool, they charge the kids a dollar a visit. Put some investment in that, you know? Make it, make people own literally what they are using. It makes sense. And it's got to be market rate, it's got to be affordable, and for people that just flat can't pay, we need to have scholarships available. So, but what the mythology is, nobody can pay, so we shouldn't charge anybody anything. That's bankrupting our system, and if our recovery rate on programs is 10% to 20%, we need to do much better on that. And people support it. People also support, down below, increased user fees for programs and services. Now, they're not thrilled about it, but they're supportive of it. The other thing that I, we need to look at the very bottom, the current funding mechanism we have for Parks and Rec is almost 100% property tax. People are not supportive, is, am I reading that right? Red is not supportive of increasing property tax for more parks. They want more parks, they want better parks and better amenities, better programs, willing to increase fees, and are willing to look at major facility upgrades, dedicated sales tax, dedicated bond referendum. People are willing to fund it, but they don't want to do it just out of our general budget. It's going to take a complete paradigm shift. We don't need an extra million dollars in parks every year. Well, let me rephrase that, we certainly would take it. We need millions of dollars a year in parks to do the upkeep and maintenance and provide the services that people expect. If we're going to have a world-class city, we've got to have a world-class Parks Department. And we've got to look at this about thinking outside the box about how we fund it. But the business as usual, we need a complete paradigm shift, and I think we're on that track. I mean, I think the recommendations in this program are going to get us on track, and we just need to prioritize what is the bite we can take this year. Because I think the next thing we need to do is spend probably the next six or nine months talking as a body about what would we be willing to do for a funding mechanism? We don't need one, we don't need a new park in Piper, we need three new parks in Piper. You look at the density out there, one park would be great, we'd take it, but really, let's look at the locations, let's look at where people live, and let's put parks right around them so that yellow area covers our neighborhoods. That's the kind of thing, that's going to take money, that's going to take real money. And the parks that we do have the coverage, there are a lot of them, and they're just in crummy shape. They're just in crummy shape. So, we need a whole new way of thinking about our parks. Whatever we can do in this budget, I want to do, but we're going to have to spend the next six months thinking about a whole paradigm shift in terms of how we're going to fund our parks. Because putting an extra $200,000 or $300,000 here and another 200 there, that's just not going to get it done. We need to completely transform our parks. I think it's going to grow property values and will ultimately pay us back. Commissioner McKernan.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, want to, there we go, want to piggyback on one thing you said and then something Commissioner Murgia had said earlier. So, I think the market rate and the scholarship model is the right model. You know, yeah, people should have to pay maybe something. But you look at the demographics here, and there's a small, but I think significant chunk of people who frankly don't have the economic means to pay a whole bunch of user fees, and so that's why I think the market rate plus the scholarship is very important. A lot of the families in my district frankly couldn't pay $50 per child.
That's right.
To participate in some sort of team sports program. And so, we have to take that into account and make sure that they invest what they can, but we have scholarships to cover the rest of it. And then, something that Commissioner Murgia had brought up was investment by local private partners. I think it's very important that we consider that and grow our partnerships. I am blessed in that a lot of my partners are sitting here in this room and take a very active interest. And there are several parks in my district which frankly are up in the fourth-year range only because of the investment by the private partners who are here in this room and who are working tirelessly to be our partner and to make our resources much better amenities for all the folks in the neighborhoods by going out and doing deep engagement with the people who live around those parks and finding out truly what is most meaningful, and then using whatever means they have to achieve those goals for those people at those parks. And so, I am blessed that I have so many parks that are, three on your sliding scale, they're year three or four or five, but only because I'm blessed to have community partners, and I think we should try to engage them however we can.
Commissioner Philbrook and then Bynum.
I can't say that I disagree with anybody here tonight. It's, I think we all have our own, our own issues in our own community areas, and I have a feeling that there's people out there in TV land that wish they could roll this back about 50 years to where the parks were all nice and looking wonderful and everybody was out there with their families enjoying them. But we're not there, and we have a long way to go to get back there. I definitely agree with the concept of having to have a price on things because if you hand somebody something and it is free, then to that person, in a lot of cases, it's, oh, well, if it's free, then it must not be worth anything. Whether, it could be a $100 bill, but that they didn't realize it was a $100 bill, it wouldn't be worth anything. So, it's all a matter of perception and of what people realize things are worth. I'm going to be coming back to you gentlemen, and to Jeremy, thank you, to see about what we can do in a couple of my parks to get increased use because I know I have a couple of really great parks, but I know they're really underused a lot. Maybe half of it or a quarter of it's used like crazy, and the rest of it is ignored. And so, I really want to visit that and see what kind of community partners we can get working on that. I don't think we can leave anybody out in this. I think everybody has to be involved, not just our commission, but our businesses in this community. You know, I think they need to come forward and, and put their two cents worth out there to help us maintain a great community because they're willing to, they're willing to take our money. You know, people coming into their places, buying stuff. If they're willing to do that, then they're willing If they're willing to do that, then they're willing to share a little bit of the wealth and come back to us and put their name as they say, you know, their name on some equipment, their name on a park, their name on something to help us out. And also, you know, I think that we could name certain things after groups that have come forward already, you know, and give them recognition, because all those people that go unnamed, they need recognition to know that we do appreciate all their hard work. There are so many people out there that work that we don't even know about. I don't know. I know you guys are lucky you've come into consideration with them. I'm just about ready to start cracking up, but this is what friends are good for. Oh, my friend here to the left. But if there's any way that you guys can even step forward more than what you're doing, sorry, ask more out of you, but to help any of us with our different, with the individual parks, I would, you know, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Bynum, and then Johnson.
My funny bone got tickled. I want to thank you gentlemen and the folks with the consultant team, and Mr. Rogers, and your whole team. It's semi-painful, but it's really important that we be given this, and so appreciative that we have it. And also to all of the community folks that are here in the audience to hear the report, and all of the community folks who participated in the process, sincere thanks to all of you. And I want to specifically thank Mr. Mike Connor, who took good care of our parks for a very long time, and I'm happy to see you here, tells me you still care about our parks. And I just want to point out, lastly, that this gorgeous photograph on the cover of this report is a local photographer, Don Wolfe, and thank you for choosing that. I think that captures a lot of what Wyandotte County is about, and I really appreciate you using that photograph.
And what lake is that?
And it's a gorgeous lake, too, Big Eleven.
Big Eleven.
District is that in?
District four.
That's right. Commissioner Johnson, and then Commissioner Murgia.
I'd like to also point out the recommendation about the collaboration and discussion between the mid-level management and the upper-level management. I think we've got some good folks, and I think Doug and Jeremy, you all know that, we have some good folks that are working, probably doing more work than they're able to do, or asked to do more than what they're able to do. But I think that their input is important as well, and I do want to just highlight that. I do encourage the discussion about scholarships I share with Commissioner McKeonan. My district, if he's number one, I'm in the close, I'm 1A in terms of ability to pay. So we would need to look at scholarships and also the discussion about the partnerships with corporate and other entities that would have an opportunity to come into that with us. So, thank you.
Commissioner Murgia.
Thanks, Mayor. I think all the commissioners run across occasionally people that want to contribute or help within their districts. What would be really helpful for me are the three parks, Rosedale Park, Ruby Park, and this isn't, Cloverfield's not in my district, but it's, Commissioner Markley and I share a boundary. If there was a way that the group could take those 50 pages and just give me an executive summary on those three parks, I'd be glad to work with getting those out of these lower years, moving them up in order to bump up the other city parks higher on the list. Because I think I have some resources that'll be able to help resolve the things you're trying to fix there that you don't have money to fix right now.
Well, I think, and one thing we've talked about, we've talked about the sponsorship-type opportunities, is whether we can put a list out there that says, for this park, these are the three things we need paid for, and this is how much each of those three things costs, and this is what we're willing to name in your honor if you pay for it, so that people know exactly what we're looking for and what needs to be improved on each park. And they can kind of go out there and say, sure, I'd sponsor that. Or a neighborhood group can say, with my livable neighborhood's grant this year, I can pay for that, and just have that opportunity out there and available.
And integrate that into the Wyandotte County Parks Foundation. So it's a 501(c)(3) tax deduction for businesses that do that. You could have that all available online.
Online?
Online. And really set up a system that would be interactive, that people could look at. If you wanted to make, if your family wanted to make a $10,000 gift, here's what you could do in a park near you. If your family wanted to do a $50,000 gift, or your business, here's what you could do.
I think the nice thing about what you've done, from my perspective, is that I meet with small groups all over my district, and you get a feel from those people, but you've done a much more comprehensive deep dive into what's valued by the greater Wyandotte County community. And so now we actually have a list, a to-do list, like Commissioner Markley was speaking to, that we can work on in those areas. And if you can refine that search to what the people, like, you know, when you listed those three parks that have sort of a five-mile radius? Well, I would think what we'd want to do in those parks would reflect that five-mile radius. Where a local park that's being used by people within, you know, a mile would want to reflect the wishes of the people within that mile. And that may vary from neighborhood to neighborhood. So if the work that you've done can dive down that deep and sort of get in the weeds there, I think that would be helpful in creating a list of things that commissioners and other partners could help resolve those issues.
When we first started the initial discussions with the community and the focus groups, the same things were being said by different people, different organizations, and the theme became very consistent.
That's correct.
It was programming, it was funding, and it was basic upgrade and upkeep of the parks. And we sat through them, and we sat through them, and we sat through them. And we said, well, we need to zoom out here. The issue is not in any specific neighborhood, it's system-wide. And that's why it is a system master plan. We would encourage participation from the neighborhood groups in their particular redesign of their park, the amenities that they want within each park. We weren't able to take that deep dive that you're asking on each of those. I think some of the comments and calls that maybe somebody received were reflective of that. When are they going to come and talk to me? We saw early on, there was, this was not, it wasn't at the neighborhood level, it was higher. And so that's where we went.
I think you might have alluded to this a little bit in the way of programming, since that remains sort of at the top of your list. Did you say this, it's sort of, when you have this much data, I get caught up in one piece of it, and it's hard for me to listen to you when you move on, because it goes rather quickly. So you may have said something like this, but we have a number of programs in Wyandotte County that are run by small groups of people, and they serve an enormous number of children. There's a football program that's run by a pastor here locally in Wyandotte County, Adrian Robeson, and he serves a large number of children. I really, I'm not trying to get anyone out of a job locally, I'm just saying, if no one, if we're not offering that robust of a program, or a program that is that successful internally, then are you suggesting, because I would think that what we'd want to do is utilize the money, the little bit of money that we're throwing at program, and provide it to that organization to be able to build capacity and provide a better program? Is that what we're saying?
I think, I look at the city of Wichita. The city of Wichita relies almost exclusively on third-party providers. Why would we compete with RBI baseball? RBI baseball has over 1,000 kids play in baseball. The KC United football program has kids playing football. Why would we offer competing programs rather than partnering? We should have their sign-ups on our website to direct people to get, because I want kids in programs that are quality. What these programs can't provide, what RBI cannot afford, and what KC United cannot afford, is the infrastructure of the fields themselves. That's what the city has to provide, the facilities. And then let third parties provide more of the programming.
That is completely tied to your history as a city. You were once the national leader in recreation. People looked at Kansas City, Kansas, as a leader in recreation from the turn of the century. You lost that as it got closer to the 70s. But that's exactly the model that you should follow, is let them, provide them with this facility and a platform to be successful.
And I think, Mayor, the way we structure, and we don't have to get this detailed, but I think the way we structure funding for those kind of partnership programs is that we let the market drive the demand. Because so often, you have someone that comes forward with a very well-intentioned idea, like they want to play cricket. Like, 2% of the county is interested in learning how to play cricket. And so what you want to do is, our job as the government is to survey the market and be able to tell us what the market demand is. And then our programming budget funds what that demand is. And so if you want to run, if football's number one, or baseball's number one, whatever it is, then the largest allocation of the funding goes to what the market is demanding.
I would also add, as I'm hearing here, that the marketing for these third parties is where they don't have the funds a lot of times to do, and you can touch a larger audience for all that. But secondly, as you're talking about growing that capacity, you can help do that by, when somebody comes to you with, how about a cricket program? Instilling in them, as we talk market rate, what's the minimum number of teams or people in that program at this market rate that we need? So they know there's a minimum, they're going to go out there and try to find that. Secondly, it doesn't, if you're putting out a program brochure, online particularly, doesn't take all that much money to put an inch in there on, we have a new program called Cricket. Goes out, you know, countywide, then you're, they're out there recruiting, and you're recruiting. And I've always said along, if, one thing that people sometimes measure is how many programs don't go as a negative. I've always told my program staff, we ought to be in the 10% to 15% of trying stuff new that don't go for two years. Doesn't go for three or four years, then we probably have a trend. If it doesn't, if you can't do it for three or four years and create that, then drop it. But if you're not trying those new programs, you're still going to do the same thing every year. So those are two things that are what I consider partnering.
Commissioner McKeonan.
I just, I wanted to point out to everybody, and you brought this up, and I don't know if you know this, but in that big report that Joe sent us a link for the actual master plan draft summary, there's a separate sheet of paper for each park, and it has the park and the location of the park, and an inventory of it, and an assessment of it, and down at the bottom, it has specific recommendations that have been kind of gleaned for that particular park. And I found that really helpful in looking, focusing on each of the parks in the district. But it's down around page 400 in the appendices, so it'll take you a while to get there.
So stay committed. Get all the way to page 400.
Exactly.
Just use the Find feature.
There you go. There's an index, I trust there's an index. You can skip to your parks.
I just saw the 500 pages and was overwhelmed.
All right. We have about six more minutes. Commissioner Townsend?
Thank you. Before I forget, I would have to acknowledge what the commission started doing about three years ago in simply making the parks more attractive, just with the cutting. That's been a vast improvement. So have to appreciate what the commission empowered Parks and Rec and public works to do. That didn't take a lot of money. Second thing, I would have to echo what Commissioner McKeonan and Commissioner Johnson have already said, and which I've been saying since I've been on the commission, that if we're going to charge people, like the mayor said, the least and the lost, there has to be another mechanism so those who can't simply afford it, and who do not necessarily not value it, can be accommodated. So I think that's a must. Thirdly, back to the reinvestment page, just so I'm absolutely clear on that. The years in which improvements are recommended, whether they're in year one, five, whatever, is it based solely on the current condition of those items, or did usage, how many people would there have, just condition? Okay. Thank you.
All right. Jeremy Rogers?
Mayor, before we adjourn, I'd like to publicly acknowledge my staff that are here tonight. Please stand up, staff. There's over 90 years of experience standing right there, and many of these have, many of them have weathered that storm, so I, we've done a lot of great things because of those staff and with our limited resources. Despite how bad we've painted this picture, my staff has done a phenomenal, phenomenal job of meeting the demands of our citizens. So I want to publicly acknowledge them, as well as our park board, park board members that are here tonight, and our Parks Foundation members. So thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bach for next steps.
Thank you. And we appreciate the presentation tonight. Good job. Good job to all you and staff, too, as we work through this. I think the next steps we'll be doing is getting back out, taking some additional community input, conveying what came from this report as it kind of closes, but then to go to a strategic implementation plan to work with the Parks Department as how we will come back with recommendations to start to implement all these good recommendations put forward. So I think that's a time period that will take another period of months to move through most of this year to come back with that as we move forward.
One of the things, Mr. Bach, I'd like to see is a number. What are we looking, what are we looking at in terms of bringing the facilities?
I know the decimal point's going to be in the wrong place, but what is the number
to get our facilities up to what we expect? What is the number to get our staffing up to where it needs to be to be successful? What are those numbers? Because I want to, because we need to see the numbers so we can start figuring out a mechanism to work towards them. Because these, you know, this was about, there's about $3 or $4 million on the recommendation page. I'm confident $3 or $4 million is not going to bring our parks up to the standard that they need. So I want to know what that number is.
You mean how much per year?
Yeah, what's the total number? And then, it's in there. Do you know the total number off the top of your head for facilities?
We estimated that just for facilities, you're around $45 million.
Okay. $45 million.
That's not including staff.
So if we did $40 million, and you had a five-year plan, we're going to do $9 million a year to get our facilities up, and that's without staff to run it. So we need to get those numbers in front of us, and we're going to need, as we go into the fall after our budget this year, sit down with a strategic, in our strategic planning, and talk about what we're going to do to address this major need that, for a lot of reasons, we've not been able to tackle. But to figure out what the mechanism is going to be that we're going to tackle these big numbers and have world-class parks in Wyandotte County. So, all right. That concludes our meeting for tonight. We are adjourned downstairs. We will reconvene in the commission chambers at 7:00.